Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have a board at 7:07 and we call this meeting to order. And we invite everybody that has been recorded for later broadcasts to come out and broadcast live next. I do have the chair's report, but I'm going to delay it because our chair's report is going to be the report of the Acceptance and Diversity and our speaker is stuck in traffic on route two. So as soon as she gets here, we'll go back over to her. We do have some executive session minutes that we need to read.
We do, and we have to know Dr. Green. All of these have been approved by the committee, but this would just release them to make a topic.
So these are from November 6th, November 20th, December 18th of 2013, February 26th, March 5th, March 18th, and April 2nd of 2014. So motion to release the executive session minutes.
Summative.
All is a favor?
Aye.
So the assignment.
Elizabeth, what do you think?
Elizabeth, do you want to just get it open?
Absolutely.
So this is Elizabeth Robinson. She is the vice chair of the Society of Acceptance and Diversity, and she has the final briefing on that. Thank you. Before we start, I want to thank all the people who relayed on many hours of their also, all her team is also a member of the committee. Michael Adams, just here with us, just in his hands. I want to thank anybody for all their hard work and dedication getting to this point.
Thank you. I'm glad that I'm a little bit frustrated so I didn't leave the meeting. First of all, could you please tell everyone the school board members, the practice and guests in attendance. My name is Elizabeth Robinson, Vice Chairperson for the Committee for Acceptance and Diversity. Here on behalf of my colleagues to speak with you this evening. This special committee was formed in response to the unfortunate events occurring in our school and town during the fall. These events, while devastating, provided the catalyst for our community to come together to address the issues of discrimination, bullying, and much broader still for tolerance and acceptance differences within ourselves, our schools, and our community as a whole. This challenging time forced our small community into the national media spotlight, drawing both negative and positive attention to the challenges all people everywhere face in terms of diversity and acceptance. Several groups such as the Anti-Defamation League, the Department of Justice, as well as Pittsburgh State University, reached out to our district to offer support and to partner with us in this endeavor. The Anti-Defamation League and the Department of Justice provided feedback on current programs and practices. Twenty-nine students and six educators from Loomer Public Schools attended the Voice for Leadership Conference in Boston on April 3rd of this year. A variety of student leadership programs are available from both of these organizations and are currently under review by the Loomer High School Administration for due to the law. Our town chose to use this opportunity to stand strong, to spark an important discussion on how we can proactively work towards ensuring that the students, teachers, and administration continue to receive the support and training and education necessary to continue to promote a culture of acceptance and diversity, and to continue to foster a community that understands, values, protects, and celebrates the needs of all individuals regardless of race, color, creed, mental abilities, physical abilities, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic level. It must be noted here that there are already many efforts ongoing in the schools with the students, faculty, and administration. The effort of this committee is to provide additional information, and we may overlap in some of those efforts, but not duplicate them. It's important to note the impressive curriculum and actions already in place within the district and available publicly to review on the district's website. The generosity of the administration, in particular Superintendent Collins, the teachers and the students in sharing their ongoing work with this committee bears special note, and it was a sincere pleasure to have the opportunity to work with anyone involved. That being stated, during the November 2nd and December 4th, 2013 school committee meetings, a committee for acceptance and diversity was formed with a follow-up charge. The Advisory Committee for Acceptance and Diversity will be charged with assessing the cultural climate and tolerance and diversity status in district and recommend changes and improvements to our program. How can we improve tolerance, respect, and diversity in our district? Make recommendations on personnel changes, programs, and recommendations for policy changes that are necessary to ensure we have a clear environment that is supportive of diversity. Provide a ballpark figure in March for any changes they recommend. The advisory committee's charge should be completed by end of the school year. Two-school recomposition, sorry. Recomposition of the committee. The recomposition of the committee should be two-school committee members, one member from the Board of Selecting, one student, one alternate student, one community at-large member, one community at-large alternate, and two parents. I'm sorry. Should I mix up? Yeah, I have to start here. I don't have any good stuff here. To committee members, this follows Debbie Burkey, Michael Mathlin, Robert Eberso, Charlie Stevens, who we find is the president tonight, our chairperson, these whole kinds of students, your representative, myself, Karen, Dorothy Van, of the Met, Karen, Richard Biermann, community at-large alternate, Casey Boyer, student alternate, Paul Burton, parent alternate, and Martha DePommis, students. Listen, I'm very proud.
Would you mind if I were to just quickly to point out that Bob Newt is also a member of our committee for this special year.
The community convened on January 9th, and we met a total of ten times, January 9th, if there is, February 7th, March 6th, March 13th, March 27th, April 10th, May 8th, May 15th, and May 29th, and we met again last week on June 1st. The process that we followed, we begin a series of discussions and collaborations and brainstormings. Do you have to read them? Thank you. I must have yours. The process we employ during meetings includes discussions and brainstorming sessions to generate a list of suggestions and opportunities designed to support, encourage, and promote acceptance and diversity throughout the district. We broke down the list generated by these sessions into categories such as town line, community outreach, students outreach, activities, curriculum and policy, ultimately focusing on those points related solely to policies for our charge. We engaged in collaborative discussions with Pittsburgh State University, the Anti-Defamation League, the Department of Justice, and the Loomer High School Students and Administration. As I mentioned in my opening address, the Anti-Defamation League and the Department of Justice reached out to our district to offer support and information. This initial outreach is a critical component to informing the direction of the charge of their efforts, of our efforts. Additionally, Pittsburgh State University, a month first, reached out to our district, offered their support and services, consist in assessing the cultural climate of our community and to partner with us in this endeavor. Our partnership comprised the following. Pittsburgh State University, specifically John Tethosino's Director of the Crawford Institute, representing a collaboration between the partners. Faculty graduate students and researchers working with graduate students and focus groups comprise a cross-section of community with a role of developing a scorecard to be used by the district for ongoing internal review of progress in this area. It should be noted here that the information from district State University is not available at this time. The process of interviews as well as the time necessary to collect the success, that amount of data is predicted to yield results by fall. Also partnering with us, the students of the district of Loomer High. The students of Loomer High School responded to and embraced the challenges before our community by collaborating with the administration of Loomer High School to assess the strengths, challenges, opportunities to engage the student body and the community in working together to promote and sustain a culture of acceptance. The students' goals included, but are not limited to, increasing opportunities for students to get involved with activities, to improve home room interaction, to strengthen student-teacher relationships, and to find new ways to welcome incoming students. To this end, a group of students started a monthly newsletter which includes updates on particular clubs and what is happening around the school. Additionally, another group of students is promptly putting together a welcoming committee to expand on the already in place welcoming programs by the administration in an effort to try to come up with additional ways to help new students and incoming newcomers feel more comfortable. One of the projects of the students is to put together a teen talk group to help fellow students throughout the year. There are indeed many policies and programs already in place within the district and available for indefinite review on the district throughout the set. Here I will touch briefly on what is currently in place within the school system. How does it roll right? I'm not sure if taking a break yet. Civil rights policy and procedure. The current policy states, in recognition of the diversified characteristics and needs of our students with keen desire to be responsive to them, the school committee will make every effort to protect the dignity of students as individuals. It also will offer careful consideration and sympathetic understanding of their personal feelings, particularly with reference to their race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical and intellectual potential. Also placed the gem stricken, taking its name from the belief that every individual is an important and precious gem, this program is designed to ensure all students grow to their potential, develop empathy towards others, value the importance of self-discipline, and become contributing members of community. There are also mentoring programs and student leadership opportunities. There are a variety of extracurricular opportunities as well, such as the 2014 conference of students and educators participated on April 3rd in the June meeting. The proposed budget, part of our charge was to provide a ballpark figure in March for any changes the committee might recommend. Based upon the first year's needs, the committee voted to recommend the following budget. Program giving speakers, between $5,000 and $10,000. Materials, including banners and other supplies, $1,000 to $2,000. A grant writer, based on a stipend, $5,000 to be paid on a as needed hourly basis. Activities, including faculty's planning group costs, between $2,500 and $5,000. Training staff, $8,000. Curriculum, $5,000. Exchange exercises, including transportation costs, $3,000. The total budget would be in the range of $30,000 to $38,000. And here I wanted to add that the goal would be, and hope, that grant funding would cover much of this, but there will be, and there would be an impact to be expected for curriculum. Not everything is going to be immediately available with grant funding. That's when we take that part. So this budget is a very modest recommendation, it's kind of a bare bones one for the school to move forward. Ideally, these costs could be covered by grant recommendations, especially with the services of the grant writer. We understand the financial constraints of the school budget. However, we felt that it is important to detail the costs regardless of the source of funds. Pittsburgh State University is providing free services and support in documenting the current state affairs and developing a dashboard or a scorecard so that future activities can be measured for their effectiveness, and they have indicated the desire to continue this relationship on a long-term basis. After careful review of the systems already in place within the district, the discussions and findings of this committee, our recommendations to the school board are as follows. The school committee shall establish a diversity committee with responsibilities to outline the policy. This would include an annual review of the district's civil rights status and dissemination of any donated funds. This committee will meet at this school year. The district shall define diversity as the universal language of acceptance for the school business. The diversity committee shall create an evaluation tool to be used annually, for example, a scorecard, to review data which measure how the district is doing with regards to diversity and acceptance. This would be with partnership with Pittsburgh State University between their graduate students and their faculty. The diversity committee will research collaboratively with Pittsburgh State University to seek grant funding opportunities specific to diversity and acceptance. The diversity committee shall participate in obtaining and extending grants and donations to support that program. The administration shall integrate the above universal language of acceptance as defined by the diversity committee across all disciplines. The administration shall integrate it into consistent curriculum and instruction of these practices, and establish small group settings throughout the academic year for the specific purpose of addressing and teaching diversity and acceptance. This should not apply implied that the diversity committee is advocating smaller classrooms in the size of all levels, specific to the instruction embedded in the curriculum for diversity. The administration shall provide additional professional development specific to diversity and acceptance. In conclusion, the advisory committee wishes for knowledge the impressive quality of work already established and the practice by the administration and educators within the district of Loomer. We wish to thank them for their generous help in sharing the efforts and information with us. Being charged with the important task of evaluating the cultural and climate reports to diversity and acceptance within the school community, and to make recommendations designed to enhance support and supplement the policy in place, it is our hope that this advisory committee's recommendations are able to assist in those efforts. We are confident that we, the school, the district of Loomer, will continue to grow in its efforts and strengthen its already extensive program. If there are any questions or concerns, please feel free to ask in the front row. Take your questions.
Questions? Would anybody come up? Thank you, Elizabeth. I think I think we've done a great job for finishing up just in time because I still have your ass tomorrow. I'm in charge of this meeting for that, so I was thinking, I think the recommendations are, are a little correcty, they were voted unanimously by the advisory committee. So what I'd like to suggest is that we ask the recommendation to inform the diversity advisory committee to the policies that we need to work on in which they will then go forward and discuss some of the regular policy processes. I think the intent was to model the act maybe after the one that's passed with me, which is establish the policies and support.
No, just a big thanks to all the people that served this campus. I want to thank the administration for all the information that they were able to provide and supported the committee's work, and whatever we asked for, it was received. There are a lot of interests and a critical look, and it was very reassuring and affirming to know that there was a recognition of the very firm foundation that we have, and the mission continues in Loomer High is really better focusing on it. And it was just a really great committee to work with, and I thank them for their service, and I'm excited about the next one.
Thanks.
Thank you, John.
So we do have some remarks on the table. I think it's a sound for this, where the question is going to be answered. Do you have any last questions?
We do not.
So this is our last. You know that this could be, and we're now on.
Yes. Well, as you mentioned, this is the last meeting of the school year for the school committee, and tomorrow is our last day of school. The geek has arrived, definitely. We were happy for the cold temperatures as long as they lasted, and they showed up just in time for finals and final activities, so. But everyone's accustomed to making sure that students are well hydrated, and parents have done a great job of providing cocktails and ice cream socia's and those kinds of things along with the birthdays that they have. So it's been a very positive ending to the school year. We started some celebrations today, the awards assembly, sixth grade, and at the high school we had the recognition of all of the students for their achievement works academically, and that is always a highlight of the year. And looking forward to next year, we have such wonderful, highly achieving students in the district, and it's really always a good time to reflect upon a year and to acknowledge their hard work and accomplishments. So there's a lot for our community to be proud of, and we just want to extend our thanks to all the students as well as their parents and the teaching faculty and staff. The administrative team is here tonight to present handbooks, and I want to thank them for their efforts of leading the road this time as well. So we feel it's again another challenging, but very rewarding and positive school year for our school community. I wanted to let the committee know as well that next year we will have an exchange student from Italy. Giulio Lorenzoni will be here, and Giulio is going to be staying with Dirk and Mary Bosse here in Loomer, as I said, he was from Italy. He'll be here for a full year next year, and he's basically assigned at a senior level this, and so we look forward to welcoming him. Wanted to let you know that we have another, additional year looking forward to working with our master teachers, and we have one teacher at our high school, David Doctor, who relies on foreign language, I think it was before the committee, not too long ago, but he being the master teacher project for next year is going to be providing some additional supports to our students who work English language courses, and she's going to be offering some camp activities for some of our high school students. So really appreciate the efforts that Anthony brings to that as well as the participation of the students. So we're moving along and making sure that our positions are being filled. I wanted to make you aware that, as you know, we had some retirements, particularly one at this school. One of those retirements, we did have the opportunity to replace, and that was the sixth grade teaching position, and I wanted to let the committee and the public know that Emily Clark has been hired after that position. Emily is a resident here in Loomer. She has worked in the past both at rotten Dunstable Regional Schools, where she was a math curriculum specialist who grades P through E, and she's also taught overseas. She's currently working as an educational consultant and curriculum advisor for onboard academics, and she, prior to that, Emily also worked for the Westfield Public Schools. So we welcome Emily to our faculty director of the English school on the sixth grade team, replacing Mrs. Harris. We just today released a posting, and it was there to announce that Molly Morehren, who's on our fourth grade team, special education teacher, is returning to the Midwest. She came to us several years ago, and is going back home at this broken time. I want to thank Molly for her years of service, and was just a really great addition to our faculty in the fourth grade team, and English, her and former all of us, of course, coming further. I have the, for the committee, also I want to let you know that we have ready to sign the integrated agreements for the custodians. There's three copies of this, if you're a note where you are particular signing this. There's a place for a chairperson, vice chair, secretary, a member, if you could just make sure on the left-hand side. There's only one copy of the full agreement that I have for these documents, but three copies require the signatures of the signature plate. We also have the cafeteria, integrated cafeteria agreement as well. That particular agreement, I didn't put the people's names on it, just to keep you guessing, you'll sign on the right-hand side on that particular document, and we have three complete documents there. So those are, we're now at, have fully integrated three of the four contracts which were negotiated this year. And I have a thank you to pass around for the school committee that I wanted to share as well. Oh, at least. And then, Mr. Mackin and Dr. Brinkin, before you leave, we have the project scope and budget documents from the MSBA that require your signatures as well.
I'm thinking maybe the second to this, second to the association.
Since our last meeting, we have had another scribble with the meeting, that was on the day. Prior to that, on the ninth, we met with the planning board. Although the Tom Planning Board under state law is going to have, you know, approving authority, we want to work in cooperation, and we thought that we were helping, having a set of eyes and, you know, approving the design of the site plan. So the site plan was presented after the planning board meeting on the ninth. The planning board actually did have a review by a technical review who did pro bonos with the new book of the town, which really concerns about what we're doing, that we've got, you know, force of law. And so, at this point, the landscape architecture goes as Tephei, our designer, a bit of communication with the reviewer, and my understanding is that all the questions that were raised by the reviewer can be answered. We do expect to, again, the planning board for, you know, a planning board approval, which I guess, you know, again, it's a courtesy because, you know, the state law, you're not required to see that. We do have a meeting scheduled with the butters next Wednesday, June 25th, at 6:00 PM here at TCB, the cafeteria, and we have, through our project manager, we've contacted by postcard over 250 butters of the property. By postcard, there will be an ad in this week's ledger, so if members of the general public who aren't butters would like to handle this meeting, the, the, the content of the butters meeting is to go through, you know, what's to be expected, where the, to go over the site design, to go over the site schedules, so people know what to expect over the next two years in terms of what changes they will see, the questions of our companies with the setup, what traffic impacts, they were about. what traffic impacts, if there are bad, if you have team members who have questions.
So, what constitutes a butter? Like how, what does things are generally?
So generally, you don't say question, you take other kind of butter, or whatever.
The way that we defined it was everybody on Northfield, Massachusetts, Oak, Maine, and we actually went into some of the cul-de-sacs, if you will.
When we were kind of wrenching on the surroundings.
We tried to, actually, we did a wider net than typically we would do. Just wanted to get by this many people, Paul. Anybody that's interested in knowing what's going on, it would be important. Well, as you know, from the last meeting, we did get the MSBA approval on the project in scope yesterday at Warislechman. They authorized the chairman, Mr. Lonzo, to sign the scope and budget agreement. Yesterday, we also received approval from the Department of Health and Secondary Education on our educational plan, and therefore we will be expecting a final agreement with the MSBA shortly. Which means that then, once that is signed, it will be left, and we will get.
Okay, so, you business, we're going to talk about school agreements. Do you have a preference for what order?
I think the older, the starting, the primary. I'm saying Mr. Spada, he's a, I'm just, he has two, he's two. He's got the areas, so he'll, he's, he's.
You have some great sounds today.
Good day.
Good day.
Happy hour, we all, we're excited.
Oh, it's been like an hour, I was in the gym today.
So, Mrs. Playstel, I have this projected up on screen, we can talk to the committee because the committee didn't have a great deal of opportunity to review these changes, so it's our intent tonight to be pretty specific about talking about the things that were handled by this committee.
Basically, this, you know, every time you're reviewing, it would be an opportunity to edit for lots of different things, so we have the first edit is tracing. And just to bind things up a little bit, letting people know that our document is available in a variety of different areas of things. The next thing that is highlighted is two things. One thing that I added or revised a little bit was the parking for school events. We've come down the last couple of days to the primary school. It's been very, very busy with lots of different events going on, so I thought it might be beneficial for us to have a statement or a couple of statements in the document outlining how we need to be access open for safety reasons, and advising parents on the ability to carpool from the T-Supassios Park Mall, and they're going to be coming down with multiple family members, all of those kinds of things. And that's outlined further in the document. I then updated the primary school faculty and staff as to what we now know of our faculty as well as the instance name change. And I updated the school committee as well, including the current members.
And Mrs. Playstel, you're still a pretty great position in this department.
Correct, that's why it's a senior, I see. The next, I just add the bus fees for eight to twelve on this residence, so we applied to primary school, but I'm not, the eyes are on this, and just add that in there. We're going to page six. Due to the master of law, thirty-seven H, thirty-three quarters, we needed to look at our student disciplinary code. Actually, I have, I'm going to back up. You're on the right one, Lucy. I'm on the left. So, page five, do the update in the law, master of law, thirty-seven H, thirty-three quarters. We looked at our court conduct and added a few things there to our list of possible consequences or things that could be done before, you know, more stringent discipline could be used. So in this line right here, I added community service as an option of something that could be done for children who have a new problem, behavior, and needs to make amends in some way.
And just a quick overview of that particular legislation is by July 1, 2014, schools were charged with a couple of things. Number one, really examining and minimizing time out of class for students, and so looking at the amount of suspensions or expulsions that are going on, and if any of those are still going on, those are still consequences for certain behaviors, but one of the things of this change is services will be provided to students during the time of the very suspension or expulsion period. So the district was examining the variety of ways to continue to deliver an educational program. It's not like being in a classroom, obviously, but we can provide access to students. And for longer-term kinds of expulsions, up to nine days, certainly virtual kinds of classes are unable to provide, to provide students with the opportunity to continue their educational program, even if they rely on being outside the mainstream school for that period of time. And just as a reminder, any kind of students outside of school for hospitalization or disciplinary action, there's interests, re-influence companies that are with parents, the administration as well as system upon the end.
So, Mrs. Playstel, the only change we additioned, you said this last sentence, or otherwise?
Otherwise, it was the same. You know, that was one thing, when we were doing the law through, what the law has asked us to look at and what we currently have in place, a lot of it was already in our policy since the beginning. So it wasn't a law that we had to change. I mean, we use a very developmentally appropriate approach to this plan, especially at the primary, and I know that we have been doing this as well, and it was just, you know, we were just adding a few more things, like community service, which in a lot of cases, when you're doing a natural consequence, you know, if you put something on walls, then you're putting up walls, you know, or, you know, those kinds of things. So those are the kind of natural things that are already going on. And then in the next page, what I added was just the educational services will continue during the suspension period, and that was something that traditionally we remember we had to automatically add as well. Tares' promise is the same. We had revised that last year, if you remember, and added the tiger promise piece to that. The next changes occurred for the, with the parking for school events, which is on page thirteen. And certainly, you know, just to inform the parents and the general public that it's something that they already know, that parking is pretty limited down at the primary school, and we have done, put a number of things in place to address that, assigning teachers specific parking spaces, designating certain parking spaces for parents. But when we have these big events that everybody wants to attend, it does become problematic in making sure that we can put everybody back in that space that our schools, on the school site. So what we have been doing is trying to limit the number of events that occur, which is becoming very difficult, which can be very difficult at the moment here, because there's so many events going on and so many days that we can do that. Sometimes, you know, we've talked a lot about the fact that some of these events might have to be pushed into May, but then we also have EMPASS going on at that time. So it's a very tight window of opportunity that people have to then showcase the work that our students have done all year long, have our field days and fun days and those kinds of things. So we do try to limit the number of events that we have on any one day, and that in any communication that goes out, it's supposed to include, please consider carpooling. We've also, you know, had to, we have many calls during the day when we're having an event, and we come in, and we come join the field day, and we had to tell people, no, I'm sorry, you can't, we have a certain number of volunteers, and that's all that can come and show up, because we just don't have the parking outside field to accommodate at all. So I added this paragraph here to try to explain, you know, that difficulty and to give parents some options as far as how else they could do this and still be able to come and access the event. And talked about the fact that we can only have cars coming in and parking on one side of that access road to make sure that the opening stays open and is accessible to any kind of emergency vehicles that would be coming in. I did add that last little statement there, and I was hoping that our police could help us some if that is a problem. We would certainly announce over the loudspeaker that, you know, if you're not parking in the right space, you need to move your car, and, you know, I did that by the J code, to try to make sure that we have that code. And the last section that, that's interesting, well, there's a couple of others after that, but most of the other changes are in the medical or nursing section, human health services. In the communicable diseases area, I removed predikosis, which is head lice, from the list of communicable diseases. It certainly is communicable, but it's not a disease. So I removed that from that list that was there and put it down below to give a common definition for parents as to what predikosis is and what our goal is as far as educators and our school nurse, and making sure that our children do not lose out on valuable learning opportunities that are available to them. I talked about the protocol, that any student found to have evidence of head lice infestation is to be excluded from school until the proper treatment for lice, I think, included. I then added the steps or procedures that occur if we identify or suspect that children have live head lice, and then we talked about the steps that are taken to evaluate those students that would be closest to that child. It was a guideline. We had three active cases in the classroom within a week, and they paused for a classrooms meeting till the entire class coming down and having a quick PET check. Manual removal is necessary with all treatment options. Consultation with the healthcare provider is recommended. You know, the treatment for head lice is typically, you know, a pesticide of some kind, a poison of some kind, so we can't get involved in those kind of requests, or we can't dictate to parents how they're going to treat the head lice. All we can do is advise them in as many ways as possible as to how to eradicate the live nits. Recently, we had moved to a no-nit policy, or a permanent no-nit policy, to a, you know, live lice policy. So that means basically, nits are lice, are the eggs or the, you know, the dam of the live lice, the evidence of the live lice, and they're typically not necessarily viable or cannot be viable unless they are very close to the scalp. I've really gotten a really good education on this over the last year. They can't be live unless they're really close to the scalp in a very warm environment. So we're not excluding children that are showing nits. We are only sending them home if they have live lice. And that is for the pure interest of making sure that our children are not losing out on the educational opportunities. This is a really uncomfortable thing for a lot of people. It's a, it's a long, long process, you know, if it does end up happening to a child, to get rid of the, with the, the lice or the nits, and it's a very, very uncomfortable thing for people. We understand that, and we're wholeheartedly satisfied with that. What we're, again, our ultimate goal is to making sure that we're not having children missing opportunities, learning opportunities, so we really felt that we needed to have to move from that no-nit policy. And we're not doing something innovative here. This is something that the recommendations from all of the medical associations are moving away from, that no tolerance kind of policy, to making sure that we're just continuing to work with parents to treat it, but, and not excluding children, you know, for no-nit, you know, for nits versus like.
So you are well aware, there's a lot of interest in this, and policies that committee do, what it views, what it calls, but has the school council reviewed this at the primary on the building?
The school council had not reviewed this. We had not gotten to that point before our meetings ended this year, so we can have some of that.
So you're suggesting that the school council to engage the school council to engage more broadly, you're trying to, as far as the faculty, to make sure that both as an education knowledge exercise, to make sure everybody understands what this means, and to get feedback and other things that we should be checking.
You know, I already talked as well, with my, I talked with Carrie Boyd, and we talked about giving some time to the first publicity school to review the staff, these procedures, and, you know, her role and what she does.
So the staff, which is great, but to make sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
To make sure that the review is to be successful.
Mm-hmm. So the next part is the Massachusetts immunization requirements are updated every year, so this is the 2014, 2015 requirements for immunizations. And then the last change is on.
And that's from the state regulations.
Yeah, straight from the guidelines. The last page changes on page 23, and it's basically what the current council members were for 2013, 2014, and the council. members were for 2000, 2000, 2013, 2014, um, and the council members, uh, who are currently on, uh, school advisory.
Mr. Stoudt, can you remind us, do council members serve multiple years or is, is everyone new up for reelection?
They, they serve multiple years. Um, basically when we looked at the, um, policy and procedures around that, they could serve as many years as they, um, wanted. There was no limit to the amount of, um, typically once they leave the building, then they, then they survive.
Okay, I think, I think, I think it is now.
Correct. Well, this is for the 2013, 14. And then I got.
Yeah, updated. So do you think this?
Um, I do have copies, but it's typically on the website.
Is it a bit of a question? So I guess it's a question of whether we should include this, the lice procedure, which is a policy, it's a procedure, or whether we should put the, necessarily on, whether we should stay or if we, um, or if we were closing to the school council. Is there any thoughts on it?
I think this is a, a basis to, to start, I mean, it's definitely a basis and expectation to be, um, assuming that, uh, I would probably, the fact that, that we use this, this language now while, when you continue to work on this.
I would agree with Mike because I know it has been, uh, an issue and a topic all year at my school, so this may be something people will look to reference as this school year gets going and if there's nothing, then it kind of leaves over there.
I, I also think that including it will, will allow people to have something to react to and, 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 you know, come up with what they may see as all time next year.
But just to be clear for everybody, this is not a school, um, policy.
Correct.
This is not something you control. It's a building-based procedure. It's not delegated that, or, so we do approve the handle. It's a little bit of, kind of sort of approving this procedure, which we normally don't do. Usually there's a book of procedures where everything acts there. So viable options to put this in.
Put it in a procedure.
And reference that procedure in the center. And then you can change it as you need to without having to go back to the school board and ask permission to change the handle.
I think that's fine, as long as it's referenced in your, so where are the, in the documents, in the, in the nature of completely on hold. So it needs to be completely available to the, to the folks along the, all the other education that, that needs to take place to, what this is and, and others.
I think my recommendation would be, but that's, you know.
No, I think your approach, I think your approach makes sense, which is, again, will be really representative of the.
Right. And then the procedure will be, um, as well. I just think people may, you know, as long as it's referencing that, that may be the first place parents go with the guidance. So as long as I can find the, where do I go from here to get it?
There should be a link.
Yeah, and I think that's fine. So I think we can piece this out here.
I prefer to do that because John's now going to talk about my song next year. You guys can do it.
So the beauty of this diseases piece right here has always been there. Can I recommend that we leave the, the, the diseases piece, a definition of what predikosis is, um, hurt and, and do I need protocol?
Can I go back and do that?
And then remove the procedure on?
Protocol is also a different process.
Okay, so then would just be the definition of predikosis and where I can find information about, well, the policy and procedures.
Evaluation of that. So, uh, I wasn't going to, five, I think, I think that's the, so, we have to, it's in. I'm sorry to make you guys feel frustrated, but we've got these today and now they're ancient, so.
Yes, we have.
Um, here, what's the?
Uh, we're going to go to the parent. Okay? So, um, we did make some minor changes this year. The majority of our changes in the parent handbook came in my first year in the school advisory council and we imagine we would do a, uh, a configuration. That's when you really do the final control on the changes that we developed and the corporate, or any of the different things. So the changes that we made this year, uh, as, uh, this place, they'll set to the names of the school community members and, uh, the administrative team on page one. The other subtle changes that I made were a move of chapter 222 that's coming into play , uh, July 1st, 2014, in our code of conduct on page 11. As options for responses to behavior, we also put a community service and social probation. The law is recommending that principals, uh, use their diligence and really, um, think about whether suspension is the, the appropriate, um, response to behaviors that aren't covered under 37 and a half H A or aren't, uh, students in special needs. So in use of obscene language or, uh, refusal to follow, um, central depensions and different things like that, we're really going to try to look at using community service as some of the other options and really make sure that the upper education.
And social probation is on.
You can't go to a dance or you can't have some, those types of things, um, instead of suspending that, so.
So with their, um, in the after-school activity, that's, uh, of the number, they would be allowed.
So on page 12, you also see the addition of that community service piece where I put in under that, I'm acceptable or it's in my, but. I believe the next change was also in line with primary school and the protocol policy. Uh, we wanted to standardize, um, from primary to middle school, so those are, uh, the changes that we'll talk about with communicable diseases, dropping those, and the procedures for head lice, so.
So we can treat this the same.
So those are my changes to the, um, parent handbook and my student handbook, just the same changes in the code of conduct that would be printed in the student handbook, so outline, uh, the changes in community service and social probation. And changing of the language, like, um, an additional violation may result in suspensions and greater consequences, given the, you know, the, the, the consequences.
Predikosis.
That was on page two, the student.
Questions? Questions on these things? Is there a motion to approve any of the changes with, uh, the, the, right? So, I wasn't there, but, um, thank you. So some of the changes are very similar to, um, the, uh, similar, you know, she'll please update, you know. She won't be updated. She won't, unfortunately.
So do you want to talk about those though, uh, Mr. Stoudt, if you know, in terms of what the updates going to be?
What the updates are going? No, I think they actually were updated. She never, she didn't take out that.
Oh, to, just to promise, rather than, okay.
Yeah, so the first change is just, maybe I have to look at, um, page four is a, a new schedule, um, and it was, I think, for certain, like, that taxes and we'll have a new schedule each year. So, um, we are having a, a new rotation of our schedule. For next year, we'll have office and sharing between buildings and two of our, um, athletic director that's going to be teaching a class this year, this last one, teaching a morning, and be able to look to some meetings and the afternoon. Then we'll make on page five, I believe, this will be the school hourly expectations. Those were recently approved by the school council and then by, um, the recommend, recommendations were approved by, um, E A S. So those are our new school hourly expectations and they're all, they're aligned with the, uh, the common core, um, state standards and, and same social civic expectations. There was a change on page 15, uh, around working, the work permit, um, just that, uh, the high school office is working year-round, uh, so students can come in to get their work permit, uh, at any time of the year. On page 15, we changed a little bit of dismissal from school, um, just talking about the entry, so we kind of, um, touched on it a little bit before, but students who are hospitalized in, for a medical hospitalization, medical hospitalization, they are held for, uh, more than five days, um, they would have a reentry, um, administration.
And, uh, sorry.
Sorry, I thought it was on the, um.
Continue, yeah.
Um, so for predators. So they would have a, you know, with the, with this chart summary, we need to find out that, you know, the same, uh, complications. These are the increase in the last couple of years of, of hospitalizations and complications. And, um, we've seen a lot of success with bringing students back, you know, partial day or with accommodations and having their brain healed and, and mental health, uh, their anxiety lessened by having a lot of these meetings. So, um, we're going to continue those and make sure those are put in place. On page 18, it's just basically the school bus change, uh, the safety numbers are available on the, on the school website. On page 18 as well, academic requirements for transfer students, um, just making sure that they're stating that transfer students may, must have attended LHS for two years and never been included in the class, right? If that is just a participation, like, there's some questions about.
Yeah? So if I'm transferring my senior year, I'm not, would be?
Not, not to become valid, it's only a, a, a class. Or, you know, because I guess we're, we're, we're saying that we're not sure, um, the academic rigor of, of the central school. Truancy and class cuts, uh, so this is on page 26, um, students who are cleared from school will not be allowed to make that miswork. That's for that, uh, the simplest was not limited to test, places only in class discussions. In case of class cuts, students may, um, may not be allowed to make that miswork. So it will not, uh, may not be in our respect. And that is, you know, a student who just doesn't come to school for whatever reason, um, uses the right to make that, that, this assignment. As opposed to there's some, uh, there's some discretion by teachers if there's a class cut, um, there's a, you know, an argument with friends, some type of falling out, um, they're in the bathroom crying or with a, with a mother friend and the teacher may, um, allow that student to make other tests and, and, uh, so that's the assignment.
So there's some change left back in, you know, the regulation requirements, you know, hopefully.
Oh, I think this was just a rule of history in there. Rule of history somehow came out of there. Uh, hey, I think last year was just, or the last couple of years, it was just, it was one, and we, um, and the law of history, my ninth grade, uh, was a class, so we put that in there as well.
For the three, social.
The three, yes, yeah. And then similar to, um, Mr. Stoudt, um, this was, um, uh, code of conduct for, um, page 33. Uh, violations will, could result with the, uh, assignment of disbarred, classified community service or probation, class included, there's an intention to suspension from school. So we're, we're divided, uh, of, of consequences. On page 34, uh, we just, we added, I guess, the word posh, the verbal threats and posh threat to the staff member, um, as, as a, as a, as a suspension. And, uh, so is the concept of, of suspension consistent with the, uh? Yeah, and knowing that, uh, you can still suspend for some big, you know, surprise. And then the exclusions and things of that nature over ten days are, um, those are, uh, you can still, it's an eighty days, but you're on suspension as a source. Do you don't want to discuss them with the, with the, with the? Yes, correct. And those, those you saw were the biggest. We took a couple out. There was one that was, uh, you know, possibly swirling at a staff member or something of that nature. It could fall under suspension, um, or it could end up being something else. We took that out of the mandatory. We also took out, um, death, death was always a mandatory. We need that, and it could still be a, a suspension, but, um, we would put it over to, um, well, discussion, um, and discussion. And the extension days, um, we reduced to ninety, and that services would be provided to all students for, for, for support.
Question existing, like, um, the, the process, if you, if you have to add a period, um, you can accept it.
Very easy to, to solve the, uh, system as well.
And there's an appeal process that goes first to the superintendent and, and, and spoken.
And then on page four, we, uh, just some, um, achievement policy, um, just going to use all papers and processes. Um, I guess some schools are trying to find a recall, you know, use somebody else's words and send it over, so, I'm trying to take that. Um, there's also one thing that's not listed here, this is conversation I had with two independent homes. This isn't, we may be recommended, uh, I don't know, it's not something you like to do in the, in the, uh, school. Right now, it's a forty dollars a student to either forty-five or fifty dollars in the future, um, to run our clubs and to pay our advisors. We're running very close, if not in the, uh, in the red. We're trying to increase our offerings. We actually have new, uh, new clubs coming online next year, um, medical type of club, where, um, students would be, you know, introduced to, uh, firstly CPR, they would, you know, do some, you know, work with hospice and things of that nature, people are interested in there, some of the medical areas. And that, that advisor moves going in and that first year is not a day second, so it's an established club, but year two becomes, um, a day second. So hopefully, as we increase our offerings, we need some type of, we need some type of, you know, actually revenue to these clubs. And we'll talk to someone last night, we need to look at what, what our numbers are going to be here.
I think.
Forty to forty-five or, or fifty?
Once we're able to do the year-end, um, accounts on this, we'll sit down and look at, at what our history has been or that, uh, where the cuts are for this point. On this, uh, by our fund base, random clubs goes directly to the clubs, so, um, they, you can sometimes just score that picture, so we want to make sure that the, the, because those are generally used to, 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 to. So that whole section with the academic expectations, is it, have we worked on it? And it's been improved by the faculty council and the faculty members who are...
So what can I ask that's here is that we have three days to review these things instead of having to show up today that we need to go and prove it. It's just as an awareness of expectation, I'm not sure if you are doing this. It's just not possible for us to spend the day and expect we need to do the work and have the first. So you want me to look at this, if the management would do... So did include on the second page, the updates from the EAS special report. We mentioned the curriculum in those two areas, but we did develop, did six new school ideas that align with the Common Core State Standards. And that we did have in the middle high school, three of its family, and now in the US. Next year, we have to do a five-year progress report, so maybe in March. And they gave us out a few of the areas they want us to address. These were areas that we probably need to address beforehand. They're describing the process of communicating individual student progress. They're achieving twenty percent through early expectations. Being able to report those after parents and families. And a process to review and advise the schools for reducing values twenty percent through early expectations. So, you know, we'll be looking at some of these professional development next year. And I know now that we have the new early expectations, Tower School is going to be able to, as I've learned from other districts, you can have those attached to the report cards and it can be, it's all in category and the report cards online. So you'll be able to see how students are progressing on reading those expectations during those four years. We have to provide an update on the project, the building project. And then we have to be able to, the library leader specials, show that she's actively engaged in the development curriculum and curriculum in all departments. Just included some of the TAL, TAL Mass survey in two thousand fourteen. And I don't know how, if you, if you have a chance to, okay. We can, we can share those with you. I think we've seen some positive results over the last two years in school culture from the adult perspective. And then just updated the MCAS data and SAT scores. And then this year, added the PSAT scores to look at. And over the next couple of years, as we do this, we'll, we'll take a look at the data and add yours onto it so we can compare classes as a group. First to the first goal. Which is the same, same goal as last year, the only, only real change here is we have these as two-year goals. This is the last goal on page seven, which is to realign the Common Core eighth curriculum. That's an app curriculum and analyze the MCAS data to ensure that all the concepts are, we covered the eighth grade MCAS. And the fifth MCAS goes increases from fifty-four percent to where last year, just sixty percent in our expectations. And we've got a lot of curriculum work there to make sure that our curriculum is aligned. We saw that last year, there was, looking at the data, there were, it was a big disparity between students in advanced Common Core eight and Common Core eight and where they, where the scores broke out. Majority of students in Common Core eight were in needs improvement age. And we saw all of our students in the advanced Common Core eight in the last competition. And when we looked at those, it was really based on the curriculum. So we needed to update curriculum and make sure that we reached all the students who were in all which, which disruption. So that's a big change there. The second goal, again, this was a two-year goal. We just, the only changes there were taking out the first part, utilized the two older, the iPad parts, we were an iPad partner. Now we have the two laptop parts. That was one of the PTO gifts when they changed to the high school. And that has worked out very well. The laptop parts are used virtually every period all day long. One of the iPad parts unfortunately won't use half the periods a day. So we're getting a lot more benefits from the iPad parts.
And that iPad part was repurposed down to the primary school, but it's been used often.
Next, we have, we have a teacher that is going to be doing some flip classroom work. It is master teacher. So he's going to be posting instruction online to various lessons and trying things out at different grade levels to see how students like it, if they're using it and what the benefits are in the in-class discussions. Mr. Trex. And then goal three is new this year. And actually this dovetails very well with Mr. Rollinson's report about, about student engagement and the diversity requirements. The goal is to increase student engagement and create a more positive school culture by having student opportunities to make connections with peers and staff members inside and outside of the classroom. And then just looking at some of the supporting activities. Develop a survey to be distributed to students during the course of the school to give student engagement, connections, and satisfaction. So we're looking to see how many kids are engaged in extracurricular activities, maybe are engaged in athletics. And then to find out what connections they have, where they feel they're connected with adults in the school, are they connected with friends, or are they not feeling a connection at all? And then their basic satisfaction with their experience at high school and what we can do to improve their, their experience. We do have leaders that are willing to be lying, be field orientation, we'll be looking for more of those. And then the welcoming committee that the group, the advisory committee talked about too. We do have a group of students and we want to increase that group, so we have members of all the class, all the grades. So when a new student comes in, they're embraced and they can have somebody that they, they know on all their lunches and they follow you, that, you know, they play good with friends and some, you know, some people that they can go along that connection with the school. Because that's where we, even though we've had some of that sparing, it's not something that's, we've done a good job of transitioning new students. Increase use of technology to communicate with parents and students. This year, we're using Twitter and audience. My communication has been better, but it hasn't always been outstanding and that's something I always want to get better at. And I know that when people know what's going on, they're more likely to engage in things, whether it's parents or students and still staff members who are telling them. And that's why they create meetings with guidance to develop a, a good type of news that I go home, with the scheduled events and things that are coming up in the future that they can put on their calendars. And then one of the big things we wanted to do is develop an exit survey. For students that are leaving us in eighth grade and going off to different schools. And then seniors that are leaving to go off to college or, you know, of course. And then students that are leaving for a variety of different reasons during the course of school year, find out about their experiences at high school. Find out, you know, a lot of the students, sometimes it's families moving, sometimes it's a negative experience that they've had. So kind of think for a first one on how you can keep our students here. Develop a student publication. I know Mr. Rollinson didn't talk about that, that students could put out the night news. But we try to capture that at the very beginning of the year and have that as something that keeps them going. And basically those are the advertisements of what is going on out there, that kids can get involved in. And you know that if students are involved, they perform better in the classroom and have a better whole school experience. Create new service learning opportunities for us, we use it all by upgrade levels. And then that's one of the super community comms as goals. And just a quick report, our ninth grade this past, this Monday the ninth and Tuesday the tenth, June, they went on a field trip with, they were invited to go on a field trip with South Community High School, New York City. And we went to community harvest project and drafting a farm. And we spent two days, fifty students one day and another fifty the next day, working with their students handing in. And the experience we were, you know, it's honestly the best field trip I've ever been on in my life. So the kids gained something. We planted lots of food, or lots of plants. And we're going to go back with the same amount of graders, we'll be tenth graders next year on September eleventh and twelfth and harvest the food with the same students every on the trip. And then all that food gets donated to the district planning department. So it benefits for all communities in the community area. So it was a very, very, very positive feedback and it's something that we want to continue each year. So ninth grade going to come through.
That's an example of, I mean, of the, the two trips that we went on this year, the youth Congress as well as this trip. Luckily had some un-secured or big funds that we could tap into, but those have been basically eliminated at this point in time. The cost that you saw for those, for that transportation, transportation is an expensive proposition, but is about what was in that budget for most trips. It's, it's a minimum of three thousand dollars to convert those to earnings.
I just wanted to explore, and I think that the full advisory program is something that we've done to kind of do the works for our couple of years. And then it was put on hiatus. We have a teacher, I believe, that's going to be doing some as master teacher on looking into curriculum and looking into getting the advisory program going. So we want to use some professional development time this year and then hopefully we can implement that in fifteen, sixteen school year, formal classroom. In that program, every, every student, the goal is to have small groups that they take with, little families and that they have an adult that they feel like making a role in, in this. And then the last one is to use the TAL Mass survey to improve the school culture for the staff in the high school. And that would be, that would be pretty good for the next two years. And we'll see where, hopefully we'll see the same types of work that we've seen in the last year. And next, I have a super community evaluation, it's a really important process for fourteen. So we did send out an email looking for feedback on the super community evaluation. It's something that we took a bit of a written summary of that, but the bottom line is the number. The ratings range from deficient to exemplary, and all, and all is with an average rating of deficient. Bottom line is assessment, experiences, and deficient. It's another rewarding word, but it's actually a good review. And I will put together the summary comments from everybody about that to Mrs. Horns and everybody in the background here, and we will think that's a good to count off as part of the assessment. As part of this also, you need, the super community does have a conference about merit. Merritt Bay, board of five fourteen, and so total value has a positive. So it's up to us now to decide which to, to award, I suppose. I don't think we award anything from zero to a thousand dollars, but looking for two emotions and...
I need to, I'm actually, to my, my, this year, I'll go with three points upon quick and the, the, the challenges this year to super community post, who, who needs work. And it's been a very challenging year in many ways, you know, sort of because recently inclusion and made versions to the school and go forward here and I think it's a couple of years, I guess, that, that's something that I'm, it's a wonderful session.
It's been a little challenging year. I think that just your dedication to being new, that's going to make the hours and hours that you're going to have. So, you know, suffer from the other challenges, I think, you know, the dedication is still happening. I know, right?
Okay, I agree with you, it's been, there have been lots of very hard and very low downs this year and I think it's been an honor and a pleasure. Oh, there's a book. We have some excess funding, Mr. Long has been pushing really in our analysis to talk about.
Excuse me, Mr. Long, I have a file that I was going to pull up.
Sure.
This is, I know this was the last minute update as well to the committee because Mr. Long has had a process going for a couple of months here and that's involved actions across the district in terms of looking at what we had and making some decisions about it to get to this point. And then there's a lot that has been happening. And I've asked Mr. Long to be with us today to really explain how we're approaching the construction and the moving into that new building and making sure that we're ready to do that in efficient fashion and making good decisions about things that are currently in our building. So there's a lot of things in our building that we've collected over time, aren't there?
There's a lot. So, you know, obviously the middle school, high school, I have a lot of dramatic change in the district in a lot of ways, good effect. Things like all the current effects coming in, construction of the middle school high school, huge amount of pressure on our hands and we're looking for, figuring out what to do. We also have, you know, some older equipment that we be, that either we're no longer using or changed to a program that requires us to work at this program now and decide what we should do. The areas that we have, we have the mechanic area, that is, you know, the connoisseur area with pumps and our mechanical equipment, we're running in the high school, also becomes an area that kind of catches things that are going to be included with this thing. I don't know if sticking in the corner. So we have on that list, a lot of things that really are being used. It's in the kind of the rough area and it's got the high moisture conflict because of ground water. Some of them are metal and they're slowly rusting away. Some of them are metal and they're slowly rusting away. The things that are in there haven't been used. So pretty much on this list, most of the things that Long has, either scrap metal or scrap. There's not much, the one deal that I suspect we've been using, or be using at all, and just, well, just a couple of space for the areas that we'll have to get them out before the demolition of the school. And the mechanical equipment, all of that, we already recommended, except for the bonding and the wire mold, and all of that, and, you know, move down. The second big area is, we have some lumber machinery, this is in the industrial art shop, and the current high school was set up to have a wood shop, a metal shop, a small engineering repair shop. And as we move the program more away from those kinds of things, a lot of this equipment is not sitting there, and not, we have to have anybody using it, and we train, supervise it, and keep it safe. There was kind of a lot of those. It's all very expensive equipment, a lot of it is very old, so there are some newer items in there. We've asked the industrial shop teachers to look at what's there, we removed a few items today, that they still see something to need for. And that, some of that needs really is to filter from the, if you don't really see any of this equipment, perhaps you want to, you do see some equipment that will, but it's all been stopped, very poorly equipped, and not really equipped to serve the young.
So is there a condition of all of that being sorted?
So, yes, our accommodation would be exceptional with items that school manages has indicated they might be interested in. I would recommend all of it, the, the center. We offer to account for this for their needs, and that would, I'd rather be the department called for, although I think, I'm going to find that they're not, they're not interested in much of this, and they later on, it's based on established, for one shop, which I'm going to put lots of large pieces of equipment that require specialized equipment. If they don't, and I suspect that they don't want any of these, these things, I would be trying to look for the sealed bid process to advertise, to take the people to come in, to take a look at the equipment, and be, whether they would buy as is, and here it is, and be responsible for the whole, like, we would number all the items on this list, mark all the items in the room, and then we'd seal bid, and a lot of, and sometimes probably we'd come back with a big price for the items, and then, and the sealed bid process, and then we'd go to the community. We award those, the funds that come in from them, and we go back, people as a general fund, and we're going to bring that back over to the town. But it's a, it's a, you know, I got to tell you, I don't think we're going to get a lot of money, but we do need to be able to move these kinds of things out of the school.
No dockers. No dockers.
Well, listen, I'm really, it's a great question, I love questions, man.
That's what we're going to do.
No, that's on the kitchen.
My son was going to...
So on the sealed bid process, like I said, we would try to get this, naturally, stuff out of this place we can. Ultimately, with the high school, we're looking at is, anything that's fixed to the building, we don't really have to move out, because we already taken part in the management. But anything that's not fixed to the building, we're going to require anything to add anyhow before the building's being demolished. So stuff like this, which is not being moved by recognition, is set up, it costs us to try to get whatever we can get for it in the most efficient way possible, and get it out of the area. With the ultimate view, really, that at the wood shop, what was the wood shop, we tried to set up to be as close to type of facility that our teachers will see in the new university high school. So to kind of get them used to that, if you have a big space, lots of tables, to do projects, and, you know, at the same time, get out all of the equipment that represents kind of a hazard, because if somebody puts on a table saw, bad things could happen to them. So that's on that list. And then the last list I have is the food service equipment list. And these are the things that the food service department identified, things that they no longer need. The bottom items on that list, which are four refrigeration units, couch, top refrigeration, all have already gone back over, or it's probably they did not belong to the school, more or less come to us because either we're using both older products or old product. So we had to go back and look, so we're not, you know. The rest of the items are not really big, high body items, just probably not, wouldn't confirm all in, but they're things that the kitchen staff is not using, they're storing, however. Some of it, so, there's a Hobart food cutter, heavy piece of turnip, they haven't used it probably in years, when they get things on their phone, so I've never seen it.
Is it a Hobart food cutter?
Why is that? It looks like a big piece of, it looks like a big model. And I had never seen, I hadn't seen it before, I didn't know if you had that, it was sitting on the shelf. And at this point, you're probably, you're going to purchase a food service, but you don't go to school. So, you know, because it's, hasn't been used in such a long time, and, and actually, we were using it.
Circle society, but.
We think of it as items of scrap. Most of the items we said are, you know, cookie bacon oven that's still in the box, this is something that you haven't had to use, don't, you haven't used. It was probably a giveaway associated with buying some, some product. So I would recommend all of that, once again, to try to attempt to sell what we can, build what we can for, and then move it out of the area. So those are the three lists I have, have to, Stephen, I, you know, this is an ongoing process. There will be other lists coming. I know that we have at the middle school, a variety of equipment, a lot of it in the eating area, and probably some textbooks and things of that nature that we're still working on, trying to finalize the list, confirm that no one expects to use, leave the items again. I know we also have stuff like the high school, I mean, the music department, with coral shells, a hundred, a hundred and eight, I think, that we're using, that have been stored and definitely lying there. But I saw they get all the, both the other departments and the food school department as well, and some greenhouse equipment. And finally, I know that the visitor government, we're going to have some things that we will have to come with us, if we, we have all the old folding chairs, because we have, I don't know how old they are, but they are very hazardous, you know, but we have no one, we have, we have some, and then some, and one really large, I don't know if you've seen them, but we'll have to, we'll have to. So this is the ongoing process, and I fully expect that we'll be doing this far enough until, during the things.
I really appreciate it, Mr. Long, though, starting to put the plan together in the list now, because our concern is that we end up in a situation where everybody's rushed now, and things just get tossed away or something. So everybody's been cooperating, cooperating with this, and I think we just continue to move this on, and we really do look for reuse whenever possible, but then moving it. Textbooks, at times we look for places that we can don't get close, and so it's not just throwing that on the table, actually, we just try to look for a second one for a lot of these things. And going through the town first, right, John?
Yeah, it's tempting whether it's in town. You know, for the most part, we're trying to recycle, in some form or fashion, everything that we can. We were trying to do, the last time I came to you on, in the system, we were dealing with the process of program, and we were trying to use a vendor that was trying to move things offshore, either the Endurance or AB or some other thing, and we got to where it was just going to be more expensive for us, to ship it overseas and get it, if that used versus recycling it as scrap metal. So we tried to do the, do what we tend to keep things in service for somebody, but at the same time, we have to pass out things, to keep it possible.
Recommend that we deploy these access to it until we're done.
So move, honey, especially, if you're...
I definitely need a, I think, a big, uh...
You would just put them out on the lawn, like bonfire?
It could be raffle rides.
Raffle rides.
Put that Hobart meat slice there.
And I know, I can, Simon and Jim always give this, Mr. Long is very strategic about this, he finds out what people really want, and then he puts about five other things in there.
We do have, like, on the food service list, we do have a lot of sugar bowls and creamers.
Ooh, yeah, that's amazing. Whole, whole espy?
No, there's...
But that's a long time ago.
Boxes, so, twenty-four is a lot of that.
I didn't realize it's twenty-four, like, creamers in South Philly?
And that's what they kept, what they kept, like, to do, to develop on top of it, but I don't know how they kept creamers.
Well, they used to put them on the tables. It used to be that you had it out at tables in the cafeteria, your cream, your sugar, your, yeah.
Now that's...
Mr. Long, while you're here, perhaps a quick update around our electrical situation over...
It's a duty to progress, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're right.
Aye!
No, just, you all were worried to the situation with the electricity, even found that, with Turkey Bell, just a quick update.
Yeah, so, we only get power stored to the middle school by Saturday, then, nine a week. This was not a problem, you know, it was a problem with the school, like, the kitchen room, we were a few, eight hundred, you know, I knew we probably had these, but then just laid eyes on it, it was in the main distribution, so we did have a contractor, a contractor come out, assess it, determine whether we, so we picked up two, one for the win, and the second for each, we did a $600 fee, and we were back helping them. We did have the rest, some consequences, it's all out of luck, freezer at the middle school, the contactors, we didn't, the condenser, it's like, currently damaged, we had, only had two or three lives of power in the building, and that, that plugged it up, so we got $200 and $200 worth of, we tried to, we moved things, and we didn't really, and when we restored power, everything came off, but the condenser didn't click on. And we kind of put it on, and then, and then that freezer was restored, so it was, it was, but, so we're back up and running, we did come across some concerns, really electric here, that weren't resolved by the, the main shut off at school, and Stowe did not pull the, pull all the contact outs, so essentially, we weren't able to shut down power inside the school, had a new set of this thing outside, so that's something I'll figure out, I think, dealing with, you know, putting the vision back out a second time, getting cut out of the building, and then getting in the central, we can do a better reaction, and shut off it. The shut off, into it, the contacts moved just a little bit, but didn't break the contact. You know, it's always, I mean, people, if they actually have power to the building, if they have to go to the maintenance, you should have, you know, the side, it may shut off, you can shut off power down the stream, but you can't shut it off.
So what, I was thinking, we're using the...
You know, when we looked at the contacts, the center contacts, the one that blew, it didn't look like it was discolored, but we don't know why. You know, we're always concerned with contact, if we're not, if we're on good contact, it can be a first week, and so this is something we're not going to, we have to go deal with this, you know, or what we're going to do. We want to do, make sure that, oh, the discomportable, the switch, we want to pick up, you know, good visual, look at all the contacts, make sure that the pilots are just put on, and we have good action, you know, rather than just...
So you don't have any concern that there's actually offshore, if there's sufficient magnitude to overload the main breakers?
No, because I would have, I would have thought that would happen, you know, somewhere downstream of that, not through the main, you know, one of the sub panels in the building, or in the main distribution panel, on the bolt breakers, losing the main, the main breaker. These, these are probably the original pieces, but many of them are, it's not that, you eat, it's probably, it was, it's probably, it's probably, it's probably...
Thanks, John.
You have some donations?
Just want to acknowledge the donation, I think, we had talked about this donation before, but it's finally all about transpired from the memorial fund for the shot clocks.
Yep.
They were actually purchased and put in to use, because we hadn't purchased them, but put them into use for the basketballs, and we didn't have shot clocks. It was one of those just in time, so, 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 so. So, the memorial fund, a lot of those donations that we received during the, held there, recommend acknowledgement of this, with gratitude, to the same, I would, to the memorial fund.
True. Are you familiar by, with the, with the, with this, public comment?
Yeah, I did everything.
Did that, you mean, did that? Okay, reports, any time I have, no reports, school council?
Oh, PTO? Okay, yeah, we had a meeting, and so we changed up our body laws, and we recommended that we vote on body laws at September's meeting, which means that they have to send them out to the entire distribution list, probably here over the summer.
What we see, kind of the nature, the change in plans?
Well, how we meet people later, like, we should, so that's what we have to, like, you know, yeah, there was a lot of, like, to be able to vote, maybe, by email, sometimes, you know, just stuff like that, to, to get, like, the old ones had us posting that on bulletin boards. Yeah, that had been eaten, which, you know, they've done years, they did not, you know, because they used to have, I guess, bulletin board that you score, or you were supposed to post it, so, yeah, but they're not even there, so that needed to be upgraded.
Didn't it, look at the viral is coming out, then the, or we just support the school, and then there was somebody who questioned, but, um...
That was within the...
Right, if they could do it in a meeting, they know, everybody was...
The body, the body law, that was fine, but we wanted to make sure that we...
You clarified it.
Yes, so that, that kind of prompted a, a, a whole...
And so they were able, yeah, we need to change.
And, yeah, I was going to tell you, Karen Kaperke Chow, she has a sixth grader in Langley, so she's like, you know, she should do that for a while. Yeah, you know, you want to get somebody that's...
Chow, last name is?
Kaperke Chow, Chow. So then we have Amy, Amy State, who's vice president, Amy Towers. So then we have Amy, Amy Staidon is vice president, Amy Powers. Sherry Owens is secretary. Treasurer is Lisa Harrison, amazing, and then he's a fan, so. Jessica Frank is doing membership, which we have called the father. And we have, now we're going to have somebody doing publicity. Allison, what we doing publicity on? Yeah. But this is good, because they're all younger, they're the members. Which would be, you know, look at the kids. Because they're long, but they're not just. And then, and then we have to update the membership. So hopefully that will be done, yeah, for the school.
Do you have some questions?
No. So, wait a minute. We need to update the launch, yeah.
Policies, you have nothing to do with them?
We talked about a lot of the policies. We're waiting for the superintendent to go in on a format, and I know we wanted to make sure that we, you know, we're in a position where people have a chance to find out. So that was the work we were looking at. Just as we start to get people's attention again in August, we'll start the first readings. I can tell you that the ones that we sent out just to go, so here are some things we're considering, et cetera, et cetera, we've not received any feedback. Probably give opportunities.
Oh, yeah.
Probably plenty of probably still.
Still done.
Do you want to say that to me?
Um, Dana, I'm sorry, but I'm not in the queue.
Well, then we used to schedule some meetings Monday, next Monday, the 23rd, and then jump in the coming board to have a dialogue and the discussions that Freddie always had in the way of the planning of a law, a village bylaw, defining, you know, village center, and creating a bylaw of, you know, typical building uses. It does, of course, have a lot of, like, planning around the, the buildings within the local, the village area. If the future discussion needs to talk about that.
So there's one more thing that I just wanted to share about the building reuse, which was that there was some discussion at planning, concerning the building reuse regarding what the potential plot property was for Passos, and particularly concerned now whether that would impinge on future development of the Passos. And the landscape architect took a look at, if he came up with a conceptual parcel, you know, nothing official about it, but just to take a look at, is there a possibility to create a parcel that will be compliant for the answer test? So we, we will have to go outside of that, to, you know, and transport it. You're right. We're nowhere near there. But they, their, the reuse community is, their belief is that if you go forward excessively, you should begin marketing.
Okay. So on the, our lead calendar, there was a draft sent around, which is just a continuation of our first and third Wednesdays, whatever, et cetera, depends on the last school location. We'd like to recommend that you don't be on July 7th, in the state of Louisiana.
I know. Are you at your summer?
So what, is it okay if we fold the one on the 16th, there's a tender meeting, and we need a three YouTube, is that looking those, or?
We're, I'm sorry, we're looking at July?
Yeah, July 16th.
We can't have a corner in the month of February, so.
July 16th, okay.
I, I need to know.
So I did email Daniel, and he said we, they said we available for six months or at least, so. She was like. So he specifically asked me for days in July, but it didn't work.
It doesn't go available on the website.
And then we can address the others meetings, which are currently updates, looking into it really. I'm not sure what I'm doing with this. But we can, great, I mean, I don't know. We do need to schedule some workshops, so. So we should schedule workshops to be over our doors, and figure out what we're going to do for the students. We have those, at which one, one we succeeded, Morris City, and then we have a building project, and that was before, this is where we're in, and we still have a school of years ago, where we have a motion set from this, and it's had a bit of, so we need to figure out what, figure out the situation for the summer. I'd also like to suggest that we have workshops in the summer, to, to really go over. We tend to look at sort of quickly, yeah, when the results show up twice a year.
I, I think that would be good for us to schedule that after we have the results back, and have the, we said that, because what I'd like to suggest is that we get the results back and, you notice that we did not bring a proposal to you for a moving part. After the ongoing discussions would be administered between, and the, the lack of capacity to do that online, and the fact that it's still under development, we kind of thought we'll modify the state that we designed to, to stick with the one that we mentioned.
Is that in, um, moving, moving, or is going?
No, that, they're not, they're not piloting anymore, so they're going free.
Okay, so we don't have anybody doubling up?
That's, at least, well, at this point, unless they decide to leave them on somehow.
Well, unless everybody gets out and then we change the rules.
Right, right. You're right, everybody, you're right.
But, you know, I would say that they're going to have some districts, and some rather relatively large districts that seem to be able to take that step, and are wanting to get that stuff. So they may have a subdivision pool in terms of the next, to not be mandating highly.
Other suggestions or contributions?
So we can schedule the workshops on, uh, you know?
Yeah, so we'll, so we'll, you know, this one that we're talking about, the ones we're going to follow.
And, and we can look at that new data, that TELLS data is a survey that educators take and can provide feedback. We have two data points now, because it was done in 2004, and then the spring was completed. And we could do that as a separate, we could do it as part of that workshop, and just put in this information back here. I'll send it, the information to you, because it's been distributed, and we can, but we're in terms of, we can also, I need to check one screen, our local reports. I need to go back and assess the level of reuse. The state reuse is, I think, by district, they give them a, a larger evaluation, but I don't need to go back and check. And it's just an overall, so. And it's, it's, I'm not going to.
And the other workshop, I think we want to, you know, the others, or?
But it's, so true.
The permission, but it was, I mean, it's like, nobody, we can do a little workshop of, some of them go two years. I think we, we, you know, we have, exactly the same, so, promotion for German.
So who?